Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call regular meeting and see council the order. Ask if you can join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We will respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have first on our agenda Sherri Charles from the Kiwanis Club in Ixtis.
Hello. Thank you for letting me unmute my presentation. I am Sherri Charles. I'm governor of the Kiwanis District of West Virginia. If you don't know what Kiwanis is, it's a civic organization. And our slogan is, "We change the world, one community at a time." Uh, we're here to start a new beginning of the club. And I'm proud to say that at this time, we have ten members. And we're looking to start as an organization probably the end of July. The club itself will decide whether it's going to be Upsher County or it's going to be Buchanan and decide where they meet and when they meet. Some of the programs that we have with this is we have, we're mainly in the schools. We have K Kids, that's in the elementary school. We, that help with building upgrades and citizenship. We have Builders Club, and this is a club that the children elect their own officers and do their own agenda. And, but we encourage them to work with, with projects within the school and then within the city. And then one that you might have heard of is Key Club. And this is in the high school. And this is one of the oldest service organizations in high school that we have in the United States. And I'm proud to say that it's, I think it's one of the finest. When young men and young women are associated with Key Club, it challenges them to be citizens of the United States and citizens of West Virginia. And, but to do the things that, that needs to be done. And then we have Kiwanis and then we have Action Club. That's for the mentally handicapped adults. We're in all counties in West Virginia. We're in all states. And we're in sixty-six countries of the world. Our international project is called Eliminate. And what that does is we're trying to eliminate neon tetanus from the world. Tetanus here is not a very harmful thing because we each get tetanus shots if we get hurt. In third world countries, if a lady delivers in unsanitary conditions, she can get tetanus from the dirt and then she gives it to the child when it was born. And if the child develops tetanus, it will die in seven days. And one of the most excruciating deaths that, that I've ever seen done. But we've so far eradicated it from thirteen countries of the world, twenty-three countries of the world. And our, our hope is for, there's thirty-three more on the list. But I passed out brochures. I have brochures over here. It's fifty dollars to join, uh, to be a charter member. Then in October, the dues will be ninety dollars and this will be assessed by the club. But I'll be glad to leave some brochures here for you. If anybody has any questions or anything, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Sherri?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Okay.
When you said that you hadn't decided Buchanan or Upsher County, I just used both the names, Buchanan, Upsher County, Kiwanis Club.
Well, that can decide whether it's going to be just Buchanan or whether it's going to be Upsher County. And that way it can include, what is it, Rock, Rock City?
Rock City.
Yeah. That, and other different communities around. But that will be strictly up to the club.
See, we are unique in that we are probably one of the only counties in the state that only has one municipality.
Oh, okay.
And Buchanan and Upsher County are thought of simultaneously.
Oh, okay.
So there are no other corporations.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's why we like the Upsher County and Buchanan references.
Okay.
Because it really encompasses all the people.
Okay. It's good to know.
Yeah. Because you just, you just used one, it just sounds like you're excluding the other.
Okay.
And I remember Key Clubs from, gosh, way back a hundred and twenty-five years ago when I graduated from high school. So it's been a while since we've had one, but we used to have the Key Clubs.
And your superintendent has already joined and the principal of Union Elementary has joined.
Good.
And, but this is my fifth trip down to Buchanan. And as I told the group that met at Create Buchanan, it's a very friendly town and a very pretty town. I've been down here for Strawberry Festival and had a good time. But I've really enjoyed my time these five days.
Where are you from?
Bridgeport.
When I come over on Friday nights for, for Festival Fridays.
Okay.
From five o'clock to eight o'clock.
Okay.
Live music, entertainment, Jallbo and park.
Oh, my husband might take me dancing or something.
Well, if he likes country and bluegrass.
Oh, we do.
Well, you might find that.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll leave some brochures here that's got my cards and my phone numbers on it. Thank you very much.
Do you have an organizational meeting set yet?
Uh, not set yet. Oh, we will when we get back. My international convention is July fourteenth and it's in Japan. And when I get back from that, then we will organize and we'll have our pre-organization meeting then.
Well, whenever you have an organizational meeting set for this chapter, you might want to let us know and do what we can to kind of help us size it for you.
I appreciate that, sir.
Where, where are you planning on meeting?
Uh, that will be up to the club.
Okay.
Now, when you say it's up to the club, it'll be up, not to the club in town here yet?
It'll be up to the new club that's formed, before they want to meet.
So you have ten members now?
Uh, yes, sir. And hopefully I'll, I'll be getting some more. I've got several, I can't think of her name, the lady that's the head of the Strawberry Festival that works.
Serena?
Yeah. Yes. Uh, she's joining. And so, and the sheriff has joined. And so we have, like I said, I'm really proud of the members that, that we've joined.
But fifty dollars will give you a charter member.
Yes, sir.
Then in the fall, you start paying annual dues of ninety dollars? Is that the way it goes?
Yes, sir. Ninety-two, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Sure.
Ma'am, I'm with the Franklin Bartlett Post Seven American Legion. And we have a very nice meeting hall, non-smoking area.
Oh, that's great.
And maybe the next time you're coming to town, I'll get you my number on your way out.
Okay.
But you can call and come check it out and invite your charter members that you have in case they're thinking about trying to find a place locally that everybody can come in.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
And also, we would like to work with American Legion on projects, whether it's putting out flags or.
Wonderful.
And, because we're always looking for projects to help clean up the city or, or work with schools or anything like that.
Great.
Any other questions?
Does your brochure tell what is expected of a member that, when they join?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On the back, we have our objects, uh, objects of Kiwanis. And this tells what the, the club is about and what it's been about since. It was started in nineteen twenty-four in Detroit. And next year, we'll have our one-hundredth birthday in Indianapolis. That's where our headquarters are now. And it's, it's based on to encourage the daily living of the golden rule, to adopt the application of higher and social standards, to develop aggressive and searchable citizenship, practical means of enduring friendships, and to create and maintain the sound public opinion and high idealism which makes the increase of righteous justice and patriotism and goodwill. And so I always thought that those were very good characteristics to live up to.
One more question. What does Kiwanis stand for? What's that mean?
Uh, it's an Indian word that means goodwill.
Well, I'm sure Washington don't want us to do away with the Indian connotation.
If they had us do away with every word that we had from Indians, we wouldn't speak half the language we have.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Glad you were able to come out. Dennis, you didn't circle the Y, but I was recognized. Why? You didn't put, you didn't circle Y for yes, you want to speak.
Oh, yes, I do.
Okay, speak.
Here's some extra brochures.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. In years past, Mountain State Video Imaging has worked with various city officials and prominent figures and even just regular people on the, from the street to introduce things on the, on the TV station. And that's where we want to start up again. I approached county commission this morning and they're in, in favor of it. They want to try it. It would go like this. We put you in front of camera and you would say, "Hi, my name is Mordecai J. Fubnicle the Third. Welcome to Channel Three." And you're watching Channel Three, or something along that line.
Say that real fast.
What?
I'm writing down in case you put the camera in my face that Mordecai J.
No, use your own name. Go ahead, Dennis.
That was, so we, in the coming fiscal year and the next month or so, we will be appealing any volunteer that wants to, to do this. And we'll put you in front of the camera and you can say, "Hi, you're, welcome, hi, you're watching Channel Three." Put, put your name in there, you know, so people know who you are.
Okay.
I use my own fictitious name, just as an example.
Just basically as bumpers.
Yeah.
Like bumpers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just something in between programs.
What about, what about programming itself? I, you know, I, kind of the idea of maybe doing something at the airport. Might, might be interested in doing some programming up at the airport.
Sure. Talk to me after the meeting.
Yeah, well.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Sorry to give you a hard time. It just comes natural to me.
Yeah, I know.
You could do a Jesse World for, uh. Okay, Department Board reports. Amber, are you speaking for Michael's team?
No, I just hear in case I have any questions about the budget revision.
Okay, well, that's next on the agenda is on. Where else down there is? Down there, it's in the Cassano Agenda. Okay. Okay, we have E four. Well, let's just stay on task here. Matt, your turn.
Good evening. Thank you, thanks, W eight Council. Uh, in very short order, they're beginning to add the final touches to the police department and the new public safety complex. And that's coming along quite nicely. One of the last things that needed to be done was the waxing of the floors and that occurred late last week into the beginning of this week. And so it's just some final touches that need to be done. And then we're going to be kicking it into gear to, to move the police department down there. And we anticipated on that in the, over the course of the next two, three, four weeks. I've actually began to move some of my stuff out of my office. It's pretty odd to see it so empty like it is. And actually, you've been official, I've been able to clear a lot of stuff out and take a lot of stuff out, trash bags, about as many trash bags as I have in boxes. Finding stuff from about every decade for the last three decades in my office. So it's kind of been interesting. But that is one of our big projects that we'll be working on over the course of the next month or so. Uh, we continue to accept applications for the volunteer police program that we talked about in the last couple of council meetings. Uh, we had a public interest meeting on June fourth, a couple of weeks ago. And we've had a couple of folks from the community call with questions and interest. And so we're going to anticipate taking those applications throughout the summer. Uh, we have a couple of, a couple of other venues we plan on reaching out to. One is the National Night Out Event, which I'll talk more about in the upcoming month. But it is scheduled for the first Tuesday in August. Uh, that date escapes me what, what that is off the top of my head. But the first Tuesday in August, we do plan on having some information and recruiting at that event. We do plan on that being at the High School Pool again this year, just as it has been in the last few years. Another venue we plan on recruiting out of is West Virginia Westland College through their criminal justice program and seeking student volunteers there as well. Uh, the only other thing I have to talk about tonight is I know just recently we switched the, the lights at Main and Canola Streets to four-way stops. And again, like the, like the other two intersections that, from our perspective, as my personal perspective and our perspective as a police department, really has added to the traffic flow. It's been a benefit, I think, to the downtown area and seems to have worked out rather well. Uh, but that took a transition period to get used to it. And I'm sure that the same can be said for this new intersection at Main and Canola. We have had some complaints and I think you'll see in your agenda, there's a matter of correspondence that takes that very issue up. But it will be our intention to monitor that intersection, just as we have the other two through that period of transition and onward, for compliance. And one of the key issues, not just of stopping at the stop signs, but one of the key issues with this intersection, Main and Canola, is vehicles stopping in the middle of the intersection. And they'll stop at the stop sign, but they'll, when they proceed through, they don't have enough clearance on the other side. And so they'll stop in the intersection and really shut down traffic at that point. Uh, that is against the law to stop or stand in any way within an intersection. And so if I could just, with the assistance of the press, maybe just push that out there, that's, that is against the law. That's, this is a warning to motors not to do that. We will be watching that intersection and should we see those violations continue, we'll address it with citations accordingly. So if I could just get that out there. And again, hopefully it's a transition period like these other two intersections were, but we do plan on watching it.
Is there a way to maybe paint that box? Uh, you know, don't block, you know, jurisdictions or, you know, don't block that.
Like, don't block the intersection.
You know, box where it's been, you know, where the, where the, where the intersection has been striped.
Yeah.
Just to kind of indicate. You've been in London too, haven't you?
Yeah, that sounds like.
You've been in London also, haven't you? Well, New York does. New York does.
Sounds like that. Yeah.
We'd have to get permission from highways, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's a state.
That is a good idea.
There was a lady that went through there and was standing, was parked in the intersection the other day and I was crossing the street and I said, "Ma'am, you're blocking the intersection." She said, "I know, but if I'd stayed back there, this car would have got my place."
Yeah. And so that's the mentality is to try and beat the next person. And that's what we've seen with the other two intersections. But we will be monitoring for compliance. That's all I have in my search questions.
Yeah, one other thing. I really appreciate the effort that's being made on, on cutting down this speeding, the tickets that are being written. I've noticed a lot of, I don't know whether it's your newer officers out there that are wanting to make a name for themselves or.
Oh, yeah, you can always tell when they're new guys.
You know, I appreciate what they're doing because it has cut down, at least in my area of town, on, on the people speeding. And I've heard people say, "Don't speed on Florida Street, you're going to get caught," you know, and stuff like that. And I understand, is it right that there have been several tickets written for talking on the cell?
Oh, yeah, several. Uh, it just popped up in my head somewhere in the neighborhood, about a hundred and fifty, since the first year.
Keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask about the, the cellphone. I just, it continues, I've seen all the time, whether it's talking or texting. I mean, and it's really, I can see people texting, you know, just straight texting, you know, on there and.
Is there an age group that does more than another age group?
Not really.
Not really?
Just across the board.
I, I would suggest one area that needs to be monitored and I've been talking about it for a long time at, is the corner, the four-way stop at Smithfield and Hart Street. And people blow through that stop sign all the time and they're also speeding on Smithfield. If, if you know where Ernie Samples lives on the corner there, used to be Betty Hall's house. If you park somebody there on Hart Street up hook so that they can't see them coming down from, you know, College Avenue, I guarantee you'll, you'll get ten to twenty people blowing through that stop sign every day.
Yeah.
Now, since I've said that, maybe it will change, but.
Hopefully.
And, and some of the neighbors have asked about having signs put up for children, watch for the children or children play, because that neighborhood has changed very dramatically in the last few years with a lot of people that have retired, moving out to areas of the country and younger couples coming in with children. And there was a lot of children there that weren't there five years ago.
You don't have a problem with the walkers now? You've got a problem with the kids. You know, David doesn't have his little walker out there.
I'd suggest that possibly our solution to our increased health insurance premiums is to be found in enforcing the no texting, the cellphone.
Yeah.
And so we might be able to make up the difference in revenue there.
Yeah, if you make us associate policemen here, I could write probably fifty tickets a day.
I've got some extra badges that I found in the little tent back there.
That's convincing.
Yeah, old stuff, I can.
Will your fridge be able to have the authorization to protect the people from?
No. No, they're, they're strictly going to help us with traffic control in terms of directing traffic in parades and helping us represent the police department at special events. I really wanted to steer away from giving any kind of enforcement ability to anybody other than a certified police officer.
Well, it's just, I mean, you've got so many four-way stops in town, a lot of people, you know, it's not college kids doing it. Because normally people say, "Well, it's the college kids driving too fast, they're not paying attention." But college is not in session now.
College kids don't drive those big jacked up four-wheel drive trucks here.
Anything else for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Big backup here, just, but Terry Joe.
I'm just.
Just here. Okay, all right. Good to have.
Thank you, though.
Sam?
The sanitary board did meet this afternoon. We had an update on Brook Street. Brook Street is nearing completion. We actually had some, some difficulties with the short gravity connector from the existing collection system to the new pump station. We had to take out the, a manhole and replace it with a new manhole. And that, that was a difficult task. But that's completed. We tested the force main, pressure tested it, with assistance from the water department. We've, we've completed almost all of the restoration, the pump station site work and are working on, on the electrical connections at the pump stations. Pump's through the wet well, we complete that electrical work and we can put it into operation. And we probably will put it into operation again using a generator, like we are with the temporary pump station, until we get permanent power from the power company. And we've been in constant communication with the power company and they've been very cooperative with us and have identified the possibility that they would do the wiring and the connection as soon as next week. But if, if that's not completed, we can still use the pump station with a generator. We also had further discussion about our efforts to purchase part of the old railroad grade and we had gotten a purchase sale agreement proposal from the CSX Railroad and had made a couple of requests relative to the language in that document. And they've been working on that. Again, they've been pretty cooperative with us and, and helpful in that effort. And, and we're pretty agreeable with the things that we requested, but apparently there's quite a process through the different departments with the railroad. We also made inquiry about the status of our request for a permit modification for NPDS permit and learned that they had recorded it as being administratively complete as of May first. However, the contact person that, that we talked to indicated that it hadn't been assigned to anybody to review yet nor been scheduled for a review. And that they don't have any mandatory timeframe. So if you renew a permit, they have to respond to your renewal application in a hundred and eighty days. But with permit modification, there, there's no required limit. However, we intend to continue to press them for response on, on that. Also noted that we had made two new hires in the last month, month and a half. Pete Tenny and Derek Marsh, both working on the line crew. And they both have been doing very well. We're very pleased with their performance. We're preparing to start on, having completed or nearing completion on the Brook Street project, it's going to open up some opportunities. One of which is a project that we've been preparing for, for some time. A sewer line out across Burton Phillips Farm to serve the new townhouses on the eastern side of that property. And we've applied to the health department for a permit and are prepared to start construction on that. And following work done by the water department on the property that was Bill McKnight's along the railroad, along railroad avenue, we've unbuilt a short sewer extension to serve that, another piece of property there that there'll be additional mobile homes on. Also had a major biannual inspection, a compliance sampling. They come every two years and actually do sampling at the treatment plant as well as do an observational inspection. And based on comments during the inspection, everything went well. But sometimes it seems like a change their view between the time they leave the site when they write the report. So we always kind of are very cautious of how we interpret their remarks until we get the report. That was all.
Question for Sam.
Sam, the railroad grade that you were talking about, where's that?
It's between Red Rock Road and the Finks Run intersection.
Okay. Any possibility that you could work on getting something done to the railroad tracks out here at Mr. Donut? Does that come within your aspect?
Not, no, it's works.
That'd be Jerry.
Well, it's whoever it is, it's, I don't know why they can't make that railroad track the same as it is here at City Hall. It's terrible.
Yeah, the people I'm dealing with, with, I think that actually would probably be a no.
Yeah.
Responsibility here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got it right that time, Dennis. I wasn't paying attention.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. From the Water Board, we had some budget revisions to balance out some end-of-year line items. We had that revision approved by the Water Board. We also had approved our, our budget for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year. We had a, at the water plant side, we had a couple of individuals that went to some training, advanced training school for a class three and four certification. They both successfully completed the course and they both successfully completed their testing at the end of it, of which one individual received his class four license a few days later. Refresh, remember, a class four license is the highest certification held in the state of West Virginia. So we now have six operators. We now have four class four certified operators, which is what we're required to have. We have a class three that will probably in a couple of years obtain his fours. So we think the future looks pretty good for our operator certification. On Kelly's side, he had been working on and got approved by the Water Board to distribute a letter to contractors, some. a letter to contractors, some concern for contractors entering the meter barrel. There are some safety concerns about the way the meter lids may be, or may not be replaced when the contractors go down. Liabilities when they get in there and work, and most, all of that is city-owned property. So Kelly has requested and received approval from the Water Board to ask by contractors to schedule with him through his department if they need access to that, and he or his men will be down and assist them whenever they need to be in a meter barrel.
Has that letter gone out yet, Tom?
No. No. Not yet.
We have to figure out an effective way to send that out to the contractor, because they also wanted it to go to residents as well. So right now, we're hand-delivering to people that come in with new sign-ups and to contractors that come in the office.
Kelly has also reported that he's completed a two-inch line extension on Railroad Avenue. They've installed a four-inch valve on Brook Street, and they've installed a new flow meter at our tenement pump station. So those are some line activities that they've been continuing with on the distribution side. And if I may, I would like to take a few minutes, as I did with the Water Board, and talk about the governor's emergency spill legislation. We were privileged to have been invited to be part of a meeting with the Health Department as they write their new draft rules in regard to their responsibility to oversee and regulate the new rules that's going to be implemented. We were one of five systems that were invited to a stakeholders' meeting. Myself and Jay Holland attended that meeting. We got a follow-up response of two days ago, I believe. It appears as though most of the concerns of water utilities in the state was respectfully considered in the writing of these rules, the draft rules. We got some positive feedback. It looks like we had an impact and got some language softened. We got some language changed that made us feel better in how we're going to approach our ability to comply with what they're asking us to do. We still have some concerns, particularly on the source water protection side of the bill. It looks as if there's going to be quite an expense to all water utilities across the state to comply with what they're asking us to do in a short timeframe. It looks like our deadline's going to be April 10th, I believe, 2016, which will be here before we know it. There's like six or seven studies, feasibility studies, that have to be completed by then, and there aren't going to be short-term studies. I'm sure they're going to be, going to take quite an effort to provide the information they're asking us to provide. But, but we were successful, we felt, in that they did soften some of the "you shall" or "you will" or "you have no choice but to," they did, they did flex some of that language in that to make our best effort, or to attempt to, rather than "you shall," which made us feel a little bit better in, in our ability to comply with some of those provisions of the new road. Without going into greater detail, Mayor, that's all I have.
Question for Tom. Thank you, Tom. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Number of things. About 10 days ago, right after the last city council meeting, we got a revised plat that I'd like to put up. It shows IAA's proposed area of annexation out on the brushy Fourth Road. This is right beside basically the movie theater. This is the current ADS-IAA operation. Somebody took my other paper away, but anyway, there we go. Trust me, there's between five and six acres of property right here below the movie theater property. This was sent to me, and I reported back that they had identified property that was not owned by the Delta West entity here in Buchanan, and they proceeded to say, well, that property that's in the gray shouldn't have been marked that way. It's actually these two tracks over here that, again, approach six acres. Mr. Holm, speaking on behalf of the Delta West, has indicated that at some point in the near future, they have about 20 additional acres out in the neighborhood of the movie theater that they would like to also petition the city for annexation. So I'm preparing the petitions for execution by Delta West, as well as insurance, auto auctions out of Chicago, and I anticipate that I will have those at the first meeting in July. In advance of that, since we're doing this annexation not by going to the county commission, but by the petition method, we're required to do that by ordinance. So I'd like to solicit the council's instruction directive to proceed as quickly as possible with this. This enterprise, because of the way that it is regulated by state statute, in order for it to expand the ADS-IAA operation, it has to be incorporated into a municipality. So that current property out there that now employs, I think, 25 people, this will result in five new full-time benefited positions. It'll take their total acreage from about 13 acres up to about 18 acres. So if that's okay with the council, I'll, I'll have that probably at the next council meeting. I know there's an aversion to ordinances, but this is one of those things we get to.
Well, there are. What, what's that going to mean as far as revenue to the city?
Well, it's, we don't get anything from it right now. As a consequence of it coming in, that property will probably result in at least another several hundred dollars a year as part of the real estate property taxation. Additionally, they have a pretty substantial inventory out there. It's not like a new car dealership, obviously, but there, there is value in what they have. So, yeah, I, I don't know for sure what it means to the penny, Mr. Pew, but I would guess you're probably talking an added $1,000 or more annually that would come to the city coffers as a consequence of that annexation. Understand that if you don't pay taxes to begin with, even though the city has that ad valorem share of what the county and state do, the armory property really doesn't do anything for the city coffer. That was necessitated because the city was investing the municipal funds in, in the complex. I've had folks ask, well, that's 70 acres, that'll be a nice, I don't think we're going to realize a penny actually in the real estate tax and the things with that.
Well, I think we should go ahead and have the ordinance.
Is that a motion?
I do make a motion.
Second?
I move that we have the ordinance.
Thank you. You've been requesting my friend John Sorrento.
Yes.
Motion made in the second, directed the city attorney to prepare the ordinance for annexation. Any question? This case, all in favor, signify as I say aye.
One question, sorry. This, we're going to have to just do reading ordinance?
Two reading ordinance. There has to be a notice in the paper describing the property supposed to be annexed, so that people within the city, I mean, if we were bringing in a radioactive mine or something, somebody over on Meat Street might come and say, I don't think we should do that as a city, but, you know.
There you go. It's going to be in the news now. Radioactive mine.
Radioactive mines coming to Buchanan. They're going to bring lots of money to the city.
Call for a question.
Are, are the other businesses out there annexed already?
Not all of them. We.
The ones in the area, you know who I mean?
Yeah.
Or, shall we ask?
Mr. Misker's dealership, Mr. Jenkins's dealership, and the movie theater. None of those three businesses are in the corporate limits. Properties around them are, but they are not.
I know they are. What about the HHR and?
The HHR is in the, in the corporate limits.
What about Pearson's?
Uh, no.
Have we asked her if she wants to be annexed? Is that?
Have not, have not pursued.
It'd be worth it to.
Since everything's.
Make that inquiry if we're kind of.
Doing that area.
Working in that area now, might as well.
I, I think, I think we're, we're probably getting closer because of some things that have been filled in out there relative to annexation in the last couple of years, of maybe looking at things in a more comprehensive way, especially if Delta West in the near future does in fact formally petition us to petition the city to bring in the residue of their property. That, that might make more sense at that time.
Okay, but not press, you'd recommend, but not do.
I would, I would wait a bit longer, and at that juncture, it might be prudent for the mayor to consider a, years ago, we had an annexation committee, and we used to make recommendations to council. Might be prudent for us to think about that.
Well, I think your word that you used, David, was comprehensive, and unfortunately, it looks like we're sort of piecemealing some things, as Pam alluded to, you know, not having some areas annexed. And the reality of it is that a couple, you know, your large dealerships are going to be hit with a B and O tax, so they're going to be very unwilling to say, hey, yeah, come on and annex us so we can give you X amount of dollars a year.
I don't want to get into the ancient history.
Right. There is the.
I understand there is an ancient history, but.
But at the time that, at the time that those various entities were looking at locating in that area, there was not sufficient public water or sanitary sewage, and handshake agreements had been reached, that as a consequence of those utilities being taken out there, that these business enterprises would be brought into the corporate limits. And when push came to shove, with the formal petitions being presented, those, those things didn't come to fruition like we had counted on.
Well, I think the reality is at some point in time, they'll be part of.
I would hope so, Mr. Holm. I believe it's, it's, it's fair to the community for them to be in the corporate limits.
I agree.
Ready for question on the motion? All in favor, signify as I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it.
On the Angus suit, even though this matter is being handled by Rob Senwood, attorney over in Elkins, who has been hired, his firm has been hired, Thompson and Zurbach, has been hired by our insurance carrier, there still has been a lot of collective energy expended by city officials, especially Amby Jenkins and myself, Jerry Arnold, Kelly Arnold, Mr. Doss. We had another meeting today that was about two hours and 15 minutes, answering discovery requests and so on and so forth. That case is proceeding. I can't tell you that while there's been a lot of speculation about the extent of the medical damages incurred by the person, the total medical bills were about $1,700. So we're not talking about a mega-million dollar case or anything. It's, it's a relatively small case, but in any event, discovery continues in that and will for the next several months. On the Southern Link front, there has been a development, and I would ask if I could share that information with the council in a matter of probably two or three minutes in an executive session, if, if that meets with the council's approval. I'd rather not, since it's a potential litigative thing and it also involves property interest, I think it would make sense for the council to hear what I have to say about that in executive session, Mayor.
Following the lead.
Thank you.
Who's, who's a firm involved with the injury, the $1,700?
Who, I'm sorry.
Which law firm is involved? Not for marshalling.
Erica Kolenich is representing the, and the suit was filed against the city, Jim Gregory, the barber, and Samuel Baxter, the owner of the property that the barber shop sets upon. So there's three defendants. Everybody's sending interrogatories, requests for admission, requests for production of documents, notices of deposition, back and forth. The more parties you have, the more fun it is when it comes to discovery.
$1,700 medical bill, but how much they asking for damages and pain and suffering and all that?
Nothing specifically set forth in the complaint.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk more about that later.
Working on several matters for Jay Holland, including something that I mentioned to you at the last council meeting. Lumos is looking at bringing improved fiber optics to businesses on Main Street. We're trying to work out some particulars relative to a charge that would be imposed. And as I mentioned to you last time, when I was reading all that good stuff about why you need ordinances, since this would be a fee kind of a thing that we would want to standardize across the board, probably at some point in the very near future, Mr. Holland and I will come to you and ask if the council consider establishing a fee per linear foot for things like fiber optic line and that kind of stuff. So more to follow on that, but that's, that'll be a nice thing for the folks on Main Street. In your packet, you have a letter agreement that the mayor signed in his dual stead as mayor and also as chair of the Consolidated Public Works Board, involving a property over on Cleveland Avenue, Mr. Portis's property. Let's see, what else do I have for you? I've got a, I think it's a pretty important update memo. If you'll indulge me for a quick five minutes, I'll read quickly. This is regarding the update on the city's attempt to realize funds from the Hot Stuff Cool Things Seized Properties Funds. On Thursday, June 12, Michael Doss, Matt Gregory, and I attended the monthly meeting of the Harrison County Drug and Violent Crime Task Force conducted in Bridgeport. We had been invited to the meeting by U.S. Attorney William Eelenfeld. In addition to Buchanan city officials, there were 15 to 20 representatives present, including Mr. Eelenfeld and Assistant U.S. Attorney Sean Morgan. The Greater Harrison County Drug and Violent Crime Task Force consists of officers from the Bridgeport Police Department, Clarksburg Police Department, Drug Enforcement Administration, West Virginia State Police's Bureau of Criminal Investigations, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, the United States Postal Inspection Service, and the United States Marshal's Service. I observe that the Harrison County Drug Task Force is a very well-organized and funded entity with paid, full-time investigators dedicated to fighting drug-related offenses in and around Harrison County. The Harrison County Drug Task Force is a duly-registered, federal government-sanctioned organization, specifically recognized by the United States Department of Justice, that works directly with and under the auspices of the U.S. Attorney's Office. As a duly-registered DOJ entity, the Harrison County Drug Task Force is statutorily entitled to participate in funds and properties seized from confiscatory efforts of the task force carried out under their authority. Our city's officials learned quite a lot about the activities and organization of the Harrison County Task Force during our hour-and-a-half participation in the June 12 meeting. Following Buchanan's officials introductory remarks, several comments were made lauding Buchanan's efforts to combat the drug problem in our community. Chief Gregory was cited as being an excellent colleague, who has worked on many investigations with the members of the Harrison County law enforcement agencies. I also was pleased to learn that the members of the Harrison County Task Force, and particularly Task Force Chairman John Walker, chief of the Bridgeport Police Department, was familiar with both our city's bath salts ordinance, as well as the pending drug contamination abatement ordinance. A number of questions were posed to Buchanan's officials concerning the extent of the participation by Buchanan police officers in the overall investigation of the Hot Stuff Cool Things Matters, and particularly of the criminal activities of Jeffrey Paglia and John Struck, the primary criminal defendants. We learned that the task force investigators had spent the better part of two years intensely investigating the matters in Clarksburg and Buchanan prior to the April 2012 raids being conducted in the two cities. Overall, the extent of the contribution in investigation and the participation of our Buchanan Police Department, as compared to that of the Harrison County Drug Task Force representatives, was nominal. There really is little opportunity for the Buchanan Police Department to participate in the funds realized by the Harrison County Task Force, especially since our police department is not presently associated with any federally-recognized or registered drug task force. Buchanan was strongly encouraged by the Harrison County Task Force members to join or establish such a task force. Mr. Eelenfeld and others observed that just earlier this year, the Mountain State Region Drug and Violent Crime Task Force was created, as described in Mr. Eelenfeld's press release dated January 27, 2014, a copy of which is attached. The Mountain State Task Force is a cooperative effort between the law enforcement agencies of Randolph, Tucker, and Pocahontas County. and Pocahontas Counties. Discussion then ensued about an opportunity for Upsher County to join the Harrison County Task Force as well as being assisted by the Harrison County Task Force members in forming an independent task force here, perhaps with Lewis and Barber Counties. Geographically speaking, it makes a lot of sense for our Buchanan Upsher community to pursue an alliance with our sister communities of Weston-Louis and Philippi-Barber. It would be difficult for one smaller city such as Buchanan acting alone to commit all of the necessary resources to fund a full-time investigative staff. If Buchanan partnered with Upsher County, Lewis County, the City of Weston, the City of Jane Lou, Barber County, Philippi, and Belington, however, the opportunity to create a meaningful dedicated drug investigative presence is greatly enhanced. Last week, I shared this information with Mayor Davidson and he encouraged Buchanan officials reaching out to the Lewis and Barber County law enforcement officials to gauge interest in the possible formation of a tri-county task force similar to the Mountain State Task Force to our east. State statutes specifically permit cities and counties to enter into inter-agency agreements such as that which might result in the formation of such a multi-county city task force. Again, this model just very recently has been realized in our region. Naturally, our Buchanan Police Department would partner from the outset with the Upsher County Sheriff's Office, the Upsher County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the local state police detachment, and others in such an organizational effort. A Buchanan Upsher Lewis Barber Task Force would seek organizational assistance from our sister communities to the north, the Harrison County Task Force, and east, Mountain State Task Force in any new drug task force formation effort. Mr. Doss, Chief Gregory and I seek the city council's formal support for our city officials to begin to explore the level of interest of the other communities near us in partnering to establish a task force that would work closely with Mr. Eelenfeld's office to combat the all too obvious drug problems in our communities. The second facet of our city's request for sharing in some of the confiscated property and funds realized from the Hot Stuff Cool Things raid concerned unpaid municipal B and O taxes from that now defunct business entity. According to Lieutenant Brian Perkey, who was one of the primary investigators of the Hot Stuff Cool Things Matter, the Buchanan store was realizing up to $4,000 per day in sales of synthetic marijuana and other merchandise. The Buchanan store opened in late 2010 and operated until the raid on April 18, 2012. If the peak sales factor of $4,000 held true for 365 days, that would equate to $1.46 million in sales for 2011. The amounts for 2010 and 2012 clearly would have been well under the city's million dollar retail exemption for retailers. At a 1% rate on the amount exceeding $1 million, the possible B and O claim for the city might be as much as $4,600 for 2011. Mr. Doss will pursue assembling this possible claim with Lieutenant Perkey's assistance. Tonight, I ask the council to formally support authorizing Chief Gregory, Mr. Doss, and I going forth with our contacting colleagues in Lewis and Barber Counties to determine their interest in establishing a Drug and Violent Crimes Task Force. If any of you have any questions or comments about this matter, please feel free to contact me. Chief Gregory may want to chime in or tell the council that City Attorney McCully got it all wrong, whichever way he wishes, Matt. You want to speak just a little bit to that?
Yeah, this is just an extension of the conversation we had at the conclusion of the meeting. I know that our neighbors around us, Lewis County and Barber County, we have had some informal discussions about partnering together. We have assisted each other, not formally, and so many work as a task force, but as far as information sharing and that type of working together, we have enjoyed that kind of relationship with our sister agencies and very much including right here in our backyard with the Upsher County Sheriff's Department and the state police. But the formation of a task force is just formalizing it more and adding more resources to enhance these type of investigations. And I can assure you, and you've heard me talk about this many times over the last several years, of the drug problems that we have in this community, there certainly is enough work in this community and the communities that surround us, certainly Buchanan isn't isolated to these types of issues, to keep a task force busy. And so I would very much like to look into doing, or at least exploring the option of putting something together with our sister agencies and speaking with them and taking it to the next step with council's support.
Yeah, Matt, David's letter, he talks about the, the small size of, you know, rural communities, whether it's counties or cities, that something like this would provide potentially more resources to the investigatory process. Would that in the long run help in the sense that maybe the three counties and the three cities would provide resources to hire an investigator working in all three counties and cities? Is that a possibility?
Potentially on down the road. I think right now from the outset, you would look at existing staff, whether it be, and the formation of a task force can take on many facets. It can be full-time appointments, it can be part-time appointments of existing staff, it can be hiring new staff to work on the task force, or it can be financial contributions. With, a lot of that, a lot of times that falls on entities that just simply don't have the manpower, the means to come up with the manpower to contribute. But having a financial stake makes you a member agency in that task force. So there's a number of different avenues that each of these agencies, including us, could explore as far as our willingness to contribute to this endeavor.
But there is a much different skill set when you're going into this kind of investigation.
Oh, my goodness, yes. You absolutely would not hire somebody off the road to work on task force. You'd need somebody that was an experienced police officer, somebody that knows our area, somebody that has experience as a veteran here with our city police department or any of the other agencies. You would want some veterans to be part of this task force, somebody that certainly knows the ropes and knows how to function in that capacity.
I think it's a great idea.
Have we ever been partnered with a county or another municipality or has the county ever been partnered with another county for a task force?
Lewis and Upsher County had a joint task force.
Years ago.
Yes.
Another question is about, about the Harrison County Task Force. Since it's called a Harrison County, do they have the right to cross county borders like they did here?
Well, I think what enabled them with that was the, several of the members of their task force, some federal agents, and so that would give them jurisdiction to do that.
And state police?
State police now, yeah. Well, they weren't at the time, but they are now.
Tiger Valley, familiar with the Tiger Valley Drug and Violent Crimes Task Unit that operated in Taylor, Jackson County, Barber County at all in the past years?
Vaguely.
Do you know if that, if that unit is still in operation or is it disbanded?
I really, Mr. Holland's can really tell you. I know I, it's been a while since I've heard that that name mentioned and I would hear oftentimes in years past of their activities through news reports, but I haven't heard it for a while. So that doesn't necessarily mean they're not active, but.
Sure. The only way I'm knowing is I just wonder, do these things have kind of a shelf life? And, you know, there was one with, you know, Upsher County, Lewis County had one. What happened to that entity that it's no longer? I mean, has it become defunct? What were the reasons why and?
Well, a lot of the, just from my observations, a lot of that has to do with the willingness of the agencies to continue to participate. A lot of times that comes down to changes in department heads.
Well, the Lewis-Upsher thing fell apart when the leader of the band retired.
I see.
Thing that's scary on what you read, David, is $4,000 a day. That is just, makes you mad.
It was exponentially higher than the Clarksburg facility. It's, you can't believe, millions of dollars a year.
Mary's trying to get in.
I'm sorry, Matthew. So if you, with this task force, where would the additional money come to fund it?
Well, initially, that's, that's a good question. Going down the road, task forces, successful task forces, by themselves, through asset forfeiture and seizures.
Seizures, okay.
And, you know, this, this Hot Stuff Cool Things asset forfeiture will fund the Harrison County Task Force for years to come. That will be self-sustaining on that one forfeiture for years.
And a lot of these questions that we're forwarding right now will be answered if we approve going ahead with talking to these other folks and finding out how it works. So I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
To approve this request.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion at this time? All in favor signify, so we can say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, eyes have it. And you'll report back, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think the next step, Matt has excellent contact with all the police agencies because of some things that I've worked on recently for Wesley and I've become well acquainted with Jeff Walters, who's the police chief. So we're all going to reach out to different people that we know and see if we can network together, maybe convene a meeting of the, at least the police agencies, and it may be involve prosecutors and go from there. Just a couple other real quick things and I'll be quiet. Buchanan, the city of Buchanan is one of the primary entities that participates in the Upsher Community Alcohol Reduction Effort. And the annual pool parties start tomorrow night, the first high school party June 20, and the middle school party, the next one of those is Saturday, July 5th, the day after the 4th. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Wells, Mr. Clemmons for their stellar service as members of the council.
You're here.
That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Do you get paid by the word?
I wish. If I did, there'd be a invoice going.
Okay, moving on. Correspondents have a letter from Jeff Armantra regarding the four-way stops, letter to Dennis Corners regarding the safety barrier, and a letter from Patricia Adams regarding, quote, "In God we trust," quote. Hope you'll take a look at those, particularly the third one, and we'll take that up for consideration in the future perhaps. Consent Agenda involves minutes of regular meeting June 5th, building and wiring permits, payment of the bills, and department line item budget transfers.
I'll move if we approve.
Wait a minute. I think we should remove E4 down into G for discussion, because you may have some questions about those line item transfers. So Consent Agenda Z1, E2, E3 would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
And a second from Pam. Discussion, all in favor signify, so we can say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's just go to that department line item budget transfer. It's in your packet and it's a resolution that we have to pass, right? Let's take a look back up from that resolution. Got some numbers to look at. And Ambi, you want to tell us?
I can explain what it is.
Yeah, please.
There's two types of budget revisions. There's budget revisions that will increase or decrease your budget. That has to be approved by council and the state auditor's office. In this case, it's a line item transfer revision. There's nothing changed in the budget. All of the departments are staying within their budget, but it's more of a housekeeping type of revision where removing items. In this case, they're all pretty relatively small compared to the big picture. We're removing salaries. If you have more money in salaries, then you might need it. Some insurers to get you through to the end of June, and we're just doing some housekeeping to keep the line items in line.
Any questions on that line item transfers? It's, it's just a Peter Paul kind of a swan. Okay. Given that, we would entertain a motion to approve resolution 2012-14.
I agree.
And a second. Discussion?
Actually, that is not 2012-14.
2014-14.
I'm happy to move 24-14.
2014-14. It's just the, wait a minute here. 2014-14 is something entirely different.
It's one item.
Line item transfers is not a, it's just an item under Consent Agenda. It's not a.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All we need to do is approve the line item transfer.
Right.
Yeah. Motion was a second.
Motion to approve the line item transfer.
So moved.
Pam?
I moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, eyes have it. Sometimes I get a nudge, elbow nudge when I get off base like that. Thanks for fixing me. All right.
Now you're ready for G.
Now we're ready for G1, Resolution 2014 regarding the ALPR request to the West Virginia Municipal League. You have that before you and David, are you explaining that or is Tom?
I'll be happy to, but it's mostly Mr. O'Neill's.
I'd be happy to explain it. It's, it's essentially what was presented to council our last meeting with, with one minor stylistic change that was suggested. Two meetings ago, after we discussed the ALPR issue, I was requested to draft a resolution calling upon the West Virginia Municipal League to address this issue. What you have before you is the fruit of that effort. It is an attempt to, it is intended to be content neutral as far as what, what the Municipal League is called upon to, to adopt or the legislature is called upon to adopt with respect to the content of legislation. It is intended to get the ball rolling on a legislative fix to this issue as a whole. I understand that, and not to, not to speak for my friend from Barber Street, but who feels that this is, you know, kicking the can down the road or passing the buck or whatever, or a non-issue, I, but I feel like, I feel strongly that this is an issue that requires a uniform solution statewide. And I think the purpose of the resolution is to request our elected representatives through the Municipal League to address that issue. We went through an issue in the last legislative session with respect to Senate Bill 317, which I was, played a small role in shepherding through the Senate. And the rallying cry for Senate Bill 317 was one state, one law. You may recall Senate Bill 317 was on the issue of concealed carry permits and the right to, the right to carry arms in certain establishments within, within the state. I think the same principle here applies. I think the wrong approach to the automatic license plate reader issue in our state is to have a mishmash, crazy quilt situation where you have, these things are legal in some jurisdictions and they're illegal in other jurisdictions. And within one county, they may be permitted, but within a municipality, within that county, they may not be permitted. And here is. And here is an appeal to the legislature to address this issue on a statewide basis. And if you have any questions about the content, I'd be happy to entertain those, but that's essentially my pitch for this resolution. Again, I've drafted it to be content, content neutral. It does not take a position with respect to whether or not automatic license plate readers should or should not be permitted or not permitted. I was attempting to draft what could be a, considered a consensus resolution, and I submit it for your consideration.
You're moved?
Would you move the adoption?
And I move its adoption.
Second. Motion made and second discussion.
Yes, sir. I am still of the opinion that we should have taken action as a city council in order to start this ball rolling here, and then petition the league, the municipal league and the legislature to clarify, or to come in and clarify what we have already done. My opinion is not of the ALPR as a law enforcement tool. I think it's a fine tool, but of course, you know that I object to it on the right of the Fourth Amendment. I still think that we should do something about that order. I will vote no tonight on this, when it comes up for a vote. And I will also, after July the 1st, I will be introducing another motion that is going to be written exactly the way the other one was. So, I respectfully ask that we just table this whole issue here until after July the 1st, and let us vote on the whole issue again, including this resolution to the municipal league.
Motion has been moved and seconded.
Roll call vote's been requested.
Roll call vote been requested, okay. We'll call a roll.
Well, I have a preliminary question. Is the move to table, take press...
I didn't hear a motion.
Oh, I see.
Well, then you've heard a motion to table this until July, to the first meeting in July.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. We will now consider the original motion, which is the adoption of Resolution 2014-14, Council of City of Buchanan. Are you ready for the question? A roll call has been requested.
Jay David?
Yes.
Tom O'Neill?
Yes.
Ron Q?
No.
John Woltz?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I ask you to sign the appropriate blank here. Okay, that brings us to comments and announcements. Go the other way, Dave.
The, several things. I really appreciate your letter, David. I think the task force is a great idea. I encourage you and Matt to, with Michael Doss, to move on that as quickly as you can with the other two counties and cities. I think it's time we bring our level of investigatory activities up to meet the challenges that we're facing as a society. So, I applaud you for taking that meeting up there, and let's get moving on it. I just want to thank Rich and John for serving the last four years on the council. Some people consider it a privilege, and some people consider it, after they get here, not so much as a privilege, as sort of, got to deal with a lot of issues and make unpopular decisions once in a while. And I want you all to feel sorry for the mayor. He's going to be 70 years old, June the 29th, so keep that on your calendar. And he may have to get a few more people nudging him after he turns 70, so. Thanks, Rich.
He's also going to be married 50 years on the 26th.
There you go. Thank you, Rich, and thank you, John, and best of luck to you.
Which is the greater accomplishment.
Pam, you want to talk?
Our street lights, we have several out. Do we pay per light, or do we pay per usage?
We pay most of the street lights around the city. We have a contract. Ambi talked to that.
Well, the bill that I look at is by hours. They have a number on there, but then they also have by the hours. And we report the lights as being out, but it does take them quite a long time to...
But we're getting charged even though they're not working for those hours?
Well, we're charged by the lumen, lumen hours.
So, usage.
It must be usage.
Who hits the liability if something happens to your city or your power? That'd be an innocent question, right?
Don't get me wrong, you're saying...
And I also think it's definitely a good idea about the task force. We really need that, and I'm glad for that. And also, I would like to thank John for his service to the people of Buchanan community, and also Rich Clemmons. Thank you. And good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
John, your turn.
Look at my Thursday nights. I just want to thank everyone, thank people that voted for me to do this. It's hard to believe people would vote for you to do anything. You know, it has been a privilege, the greatest privilege of it for me is that it's kind of one of those things that I guess you don't kind of start understanding a little bit until you've been doing it for maybe a couple of years of doing it, or seeing how the parts are working. I still only have the smallest understanding of jobs, people do. But I think the greatest privilege is seeing the hard work the people that work in the city do, and having some access to that, because it's easy, as I was running for some of this stuff, maybe some of you were, it's easy from further away to say, well, the police should do this, and the streets should do this, and you should do this. And it's hard to know the challenges people face until you're around it doing it. So, I think that's been a great privilege to learn about the hard work that everyone does throughout the city at all levels. And I think that's an amazing thing. And it's been an honor working with everybody. I appreciate it. I think we've been at our best when we've had honest and intelligent discourse. I think it's great that there has been opposition to things, whether that's from Ron, or Dave, or myself, or anybody, you know, it's been great to, but I think it's been best when we've been honest and kind to each other as we've had that discourse. If I have a wish for everyone moving forward, and for Mary, and for Rick, as they join, it will certainly be that. And of course, I think it was great that Michael came on to join us as part of all this, and his work has been excellent. And I hope everyone appreciates the work of Rich Clemmons, who I think works tirelessly for this, for this city and this area. It's been an honor to watch him too, so thank you.
Very good. Ron?
Yes, sir. I'd like to note with sadness tonight that an outstanding leader of our community, Dr. Rigoberto Ramirez, has passed this morning. And Riggo has been an icon of the community since way back in the 70s, when he first came to Buchanan as a doctor, and started working with me on the emergency squad in '71. His antics with his driving, the same way he used to do in Mexico, and hit the horn and go on through the lights and everything like that. There's many fond memories of him, both as a character in the community, and as a caring, loving doctor and physician, and he will be greatly missed. An issue on Sudden Link, there's a gentleman going around town, house to house, door to door. I saw him again this evening, and I asked to see his permit, and he had none. And so, I instructed him to come to city hall after he talked to his boss, and he said, "Where do I get my permit?" I said, "City Hall tomorrow morning." I met with John Martini. He came up and introduced himself to Festival Fridays last week about the electrical inspections. And we came to an agreement that he wants to work after July the 1st, maybe getting an agreement with either Lewis County or Randolph County, I believe it was, to come and do his electrical inspections. He did tell me that he did not work on the one that was his, but his people did. And I said, "Well, that's just, you know, it needs to be another person inspecting either way." Very nice gentleman. I enjoyed talking to him for about 10 minutes down there. Another issue I have personally, I've talked to the mayor with, is the request for FOIA information, that Jeremy McGowan has asked for information on the license plate reader. I respectfully ask that it be reconsidered, that he be given the information that he's asking for, as I've seen it in other states, that they are giving that information out. And I am worried that if it does, it does not get that, and if it goes to a lawsuit, we're going to lose. I don't want to lose a lawsuit in Buchanan, especially over Freedom of Information Act. I think that we should be more transparent in what we do here at City Hall. I believe that, I believe that his request was justified, and it should be given. I just have that to be considered by whomever is doing, making these decisions on FOIA right now. I don't want to see a lawsuit that we can't win. And again, John and Rich, it's been a pleasure. See you all around town, I'm sure, and Rich will see you here with the, taking care of all those nasty people out there in zoning.
Well, we are going into executive session for a few minutes, aren't we?
Yeah, we're going fast.
Yes.
I'd address that FOIA thing in executive session.
Tom?
I want to express my appreciation to Rich and John for their four years of service, and I hope this is not certainly the end of service to the community, but just a different means of service to the community. I think we are, we're a big, we're a big family, I think, in this community, and sometimes, you know, families, you know, have disagreements, but I think at the end of the day, we're all kind of shooting in the same direction, and we all want what's best for, we all want what's best for, for the community, what's best for the family. And I think we have had two very excellent public servants here that we are, that we are changing, changing up the guard a little bit, and that's, that's, I'm kind of walking pharmacy right now, so. And I have surgery, we, I don't want to say more than that, especially on television.
I appreciate the comments. I'm sure John does as well. I appreciate John joining the city council for these four years. I would hope more folks in his age bracket might be willing to join and take part of this.
My age bracket.
I know, it moves for all of us, unfortunately. The biggest group that I really want to thank, though, is the people, the city employees that work this institution day in and day out. Not only have to put up sometimes with an irate individual from the public, but you got to put up with the city council too. Sometimes we can be a little cantankerous, not fully understanding what they have to go through every day. But it's been a lot of fun. It's a very eye-opening experience. I hope everybody gets to try it. Rick and Mary will have an opportunity to see what it's like on the other side, but I've enjoyed it, appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, I too want to thank John and Rich for their elective service, and we're not getting rid of either one of them. John has indicated an interest to stay involved, and we have some appointments coming up after the 1st of July, and John, I'll get in touch with you on that. But Rich continues to work here with zoning and housing enforcement for a while, and but it's been great having you. I can't say I won't miss you. I will miss your input, and I appreciate what John has said, that we're able to have meaningful discussions here where we disagree. You've heard me say this for many years, we don't get disagreeable. And when the meeting's over, we kind of forget about it, when the vote's taken and move forward. And that's the way it should go. I think people expect us to disagree. One of the things I say, if we all agree on everything, some of us are unnecessary. And so, that's, I appreciate the input, and Rich certainly appreciates your service. I will also say that I very, very much appreciate what Tom's going through, because about 18 years ago, I had one of those things wrapped around me, and I'd had the surgery, and I know he's not comfortable. And I applaud him for just being here tonight, because it takes probably the better part of the month to get your head where it feels like it's back on, when they cut your neck open, and go in there and knock out some vertebrae, and stick some bone chips in there, and drill and screw a plate.
Oh, you're quivering up.
That's where he is, and you know, if you want to run an X-ray on me, I got one in here too. So, I understand, and thank you for being here, seeing, I know it's not easy. All that said, I would entertain a motion there into executive session under 698 days for...
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Dwayne Carpenter will be leaving us as a reporter, going back to work at the college.
Good.
And I would like to thank him for his work he's done for the Dalla, for covering our sessions here, his fair reporting, and Wesleyan is gaining...
Regaining.
Regaining what he really loves to do.
Good. What are you going to do?
Sports information director.
Sports information, yeah.
Good one. Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
And I too understand now, I never understood how lawyers should go at each other in the courtroom, and then go out and have a beer afterwards. But I do understand it after having been on city council.
Okay, vote on the 698 days for him.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no. That means you all can...